Travel back to their jobs and to their homes. They may all return safe and sound. In your name we pray, amen.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic where it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
At this time, any person with business before the court not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the court. But formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Ms. Summers?
I was just wondering why the minutes of the meetings, previous meetings haven't been on the agenda and approved by the court.
Answer that?
Sure.
Because they're, I'm, I'm behind on getting all topped up and they're not required by law. Once I approve them, I only bring them to the court as a courtesy. And so they don't, I don't have to bring them by law to the court to be approved. And so, but I will get them there. I'm just behind a few because of a lot of other things going on in the office right now. But they will be available. Yes, they will be available to the public.
Alright, anything else? Okay, court to discuss and consider a precinct project schedule and staffing. I don't know where y'all stand, but last night the city voted to contract their steel coating. So we won't be working with them this year. I did speak to Eli. He said that the current situation is that they're short on employees. And with everything else going on, this is gonna be the better option this year, but possibly next year, so. If y'all need to discuss anything.
As long as they can need to. Interrupt the agreement and we get hired downstairs.
I got you. Okay, yeah, yeah. Court to consider a resolution to help them, America Vote Act of 2020. This is a resolution authorizing the acceptance of the 2020 CARES Act grant. Yeah, 2018 election security grant, the 2020 election security grant to help mitigate COVID-19 health concerns for the voting public. And ensure high standards for election security in Skerritt County. Total is, how much, what's the total money?
Um, one grant is eighty thousand, the other grant is forty thousand. And then the CARES Act grant is undetermined. It'll be based on our amount of registered voters. We haven't gotten a total figure on that grant yet.
Is it a per capita amount?
Yeah, it's probably, they said they did it based on the money we get for chapter nineteen. Which is money the state gives us. We get paid twenty-five cents for every new voter. And that is only to be used by, for voter registration prop- purposes. And they based it where that we would have enough money in that because that grant caught, is a match grant.
Okay.
So there, they based what we're gonna get on what we have in our chapter nineteen funds. So I'm estimating because my money given to me this year was three thousand dollars. So the grant, that would be a twenty percent match.
Okay.
So, what does that make it? Probably fifteen, maybe?
Yeah, like about that.
Would that be right? About fifteen is probably what, around that's probably what it's gonna be for that one. But they're only, they are a list. I have here a list of, I'll let everybody here see the list. These are the list of the specific things, the only things these can be used for. It's very specific. It's, it's basically the same. It's the ones that were here when we did the hot, they had the HAVA grants.
Right.
That's basically what they are. And there's only specific things that can be used for, which is voting equipment. So we'll be reimbursed for the ones we just bought. So we'll get reimbursed for those and can also purchase some more if there's any funds left over. And the other one can only be used for security of the polling places. So.
Help America Vote Act 2020 and allow you to sign.
Okay, all in favor?
Thank you.
And court to discuss and consider bids on tax deed and property cards for trust property in the city of Snyder. There's another property that came up and it sold for sixty-five hundred dollars if it's approved. All in favor? Court to discuss an access control system for exterior doors to courthouse. Okay, so there's a few doors that we're gonna get done in courthouse to add security to certain offices. They sent a proposal also, or I asked them to send a proposal for the exterior doors of the courthouse as well. This kinda goes in line with the order or. I don't guess it's really an order that we've discussed a few months ago, about a month ago that Judge Armstrong had to put together. In it, I'm sorry?
OCA.
Yes, OCA. Yeah, in it, it, he did not add a requirement to have everybody come through one door. And get tested, but this is something that I asked them to do, knowing that it possibly could happen. With the three doors that we're gonna do and then to secure that, all the exterior doors except one, it's twenty-eight thousand dollars. So half of that is interior doors. So it's about fifteen thousand dollars to secure the exterior doors. It'd be putting crash bars and video stations and all of that on there. Now, to go along with that, we would probably have to have somebody monitoring everybody that comes in. Like I said, this isn't something that is required by our order. It's something that we can add on if we wanna do that. The only reason I'm asking for this is because it's cheaper to do all of the doors than to do those three doors. And then they come back at another time and do the rest of the doors. So, this is odd trying to look around and talk. So, it's just something to think about. Do we want to secure the courthouse and have everybody come in one entrance? Is what, what it boils down to?
Now, you said buffer bars.
Yeah, crash bars. It means that you can't come in through those doors, but you could exit through those doors.
So it's not magnetic locks or anything like that?
Not for those, not for those entrances.
That's right.
Cause you have to have, if you have maybe, you have to be able to allow it, it exits through that.
And how, how long are these posts good for?
Uh, I think it was, good question, I think it was ninety days. I'll have to double check, but I think it was ninety days.
And are you saying this is either or? That either we're gonna do this with the doors or we're gonna actually have to hire someone to monitor because people coming in and out of courthouse are gonna have to have their temperature taken?
Right, that's not a requirement in our, in, in ours. With what Judge Armstrong put together, neither one of these are a requirement. It's just something that I wanted to throw out there and see if that's something you'll want it to do.
But one doorway is always can get out.
Yes, sir. You, you can get, you'll be able to get out of any of the doors. You would just have to come in downstairs.
Oh, okay.
And it would be on the accessible side.
But that would be anyone that's not employed in the county. I guess you can go through any door if you've got, you have a key to it? Is that right? Are you, everyone has to go in and out of the same door?
We would have to make that determination. We could, we could do it either way. So, be honest with you, a lot of courthouses throughout the state have gone to one entrance as a security measure. It makes sense to me as a security measure. And that's, I'm not trying to say that we should do this during COVID times to get to security measures. It just kinda fell in right now with the situation. I just wanna throw that out there that that's kinda something that we're looking at. I was wanting to get those other doors secured pretty quick. I'm gonna go ahead, I think I'll go ahead and do that and get the other door secured. And then I'll worry about the exterior doors. We'll have to come back and do those later if that's what we decide to do. Alright, thank you. Court to discuss and consider approving renewal of the employee health insurance with Texas Association of Counties, given county judge authority to sign renewal. Looks like we had a bit of an increase this year, four percent?
Four percent, yes. That's, that's not bad. That's way below the national average there. There again, we've got the renewal, whichever y'all vote for, for you to sign an initial. If the county absorbs the increase, it'd be, right now, it's just an estimate.
It's close to a hundred and eight thousand dollars.
Yeah.
A little over one oh eight, eight oh three ninety-eight to be exact, but that's just an estimate too.
Yeah, it's up to date, depending on people coming and going.
Absolutely.
Renewal in October, you know, somebody might ask someone. We've, we've got this fixed to where either, whichever way y'all vote, or if, if this is what y'all want. Either the county absorb it or the employee absorb it. And we sent that out, so. They, they do offer a lot, tax cuts. Offer my office a lot of. What would you say? Yeah. They help us a lot. Yes, if we had to do it ourselves.
True.
Plus the insurance is amazing and you can't beat it. As far as our benefit package is concerned, it is the key word that we carry for retention. So I would encourage you to stay with them. They are amazing.
If we did, then it would be hard to get back with them if that was.
Sure. Well, from employee only to employee and family, looking at the different rates, the differences in rates. Employee only, it's an increase of thirty-seven dollars for the, if the employee were to absorb it. Employee and family would be about a hundred dollars one month if the employee were to absorb that. But then if you have the dental plan, it decreased four percent, but that's minimal. That's, you know, that's not a lot of money there. You're looking at a dollar, right? There was four percent decrease.
Yes, did you say on the dental?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, and the employee pays totally for that.
Okay.
And the life insurance that you all provide for active employees, it didn't go up. It still isn't right.
Yes, ma'am.
And I believe the eye.
The accident, that, that vision stayed the same as well.
Stayed the same too. It's just the, the health insurance.
Okay, alright. For your thoughts, any questions?
Well, I don't know since I've been sitting up here, the county's absorbed it in my motion. But I just don't think with the, the way the whole is and our tax regulations, I just don't think we can afford it this time.
Sure.
COVID effects need to.
Absolutely.
Because we don't know what we're gonna be. We know it's gonna be down, for sure. Because it's, it's, it is great insurance. And like I said, the county has been gracious enough to absorb it for, since I've been here. This is not a real big, but. I just, I, I don't think the county should, I don't think the county should be, they should be, they're still the best.
Absolutely, okay.
Can, can I say something?
Absolutely.
Just putting it out there. If there is a COLA given next year, then it would probably take that, if not more, if the employee absorbed it. But there again, I just wanna put that out there.
Sure.
That's, that's all.
Ms. Summers?
Even before he spoke, I was wanting to put out there that it's, the county needs to put some of this expense onto the employee. It's like you said, we don't know what the future's gonna be in the whole field here. And taxpayers can't just, after increases that. Other companies make their employees pay a percentage of their own. Companies make employees pay a hundred percent of their spouses and children's insurance. So, I mean, at what point are the employees of the county gonna be responsible for covering some of?
Alright, thank you. They actually are responsible for paying part of their insurance. This is just whether we absorb the increase or they absorb the increase. I think what we're looking at coming up the next year, it's, it, it's gonna be interesting how we go forward. Hundred thousand dollars is, is what I'm looking at for the county to, what, the number you said that we would have to absorb if the county did it. And I think that a hundred thousand dollars is, it's a decent chunk of change for us if we have to pay that out. And I, I'm gonna have to agree with you this year on that, just my personal opinion. We don't have a.
We just don't know where we're headed up.
Right.
That's true.
It's like looking at.
Yeah. I, I don't necessarily like it, but.
But we understand.
Yeah.
Yeah, totally understand where you're coming from.
Yeah, and, and four percent is not a huge increase.
That's true. That is true. With a lot of benefits.
Absolutely, that's right.
I regret it, but I agree.
Understand. There's nothing to regret. I mean, you can, I, I bet, we don't like it, you know?
It's been so.
It is. Absolutely. Alright, is there a motion?
You're gonna make a motion that we renew the insurance that the county has at this time. With the four percentage freeze going to the employees and.
All in favor?
Those are the two copies and these are all the places that I need your article.
Okay, alright, thank you. Court to discuss and consider possible changes in the bylaws and articles of the local government corporation. Reappointing the existing board members of the LVC. Ellen, anyone, thank y'all for coming in today to discuss this. So we found some inconsistencies between the bylaws and the articles. One says one year and the other says three years, correct? So that's what we're looking at correcting and appoint, reappointing the ones that were already appointed onto the board already. Any thoughts on, on that at all?
What kind of thought would you like? I got lots of thoughts.
Sure.
They just need to be consistent.
Sure.
One way or the other.
Okay.
The bylaws is for three and the articles are for one.
Yeah.
The easiest is to align with the bylaws for three years, but it, one or three.
That was my thought as well, is to do the three years.
Make it consistent.
I'm gonna make a motion that we, by bylaws, to be those that we leave the LVC. And reappoint members there in this one.
Alright, all in favor? Very good. So the three-year appointment, one member's been reappointed. Alright, court to discuss and consider payment of invoices submitted, invoice submitted by Raymond Rodriguez. And let me give you this information. The reason this is before the court is because it's called present, presentation of claim. And it's in the county administration code. Says that except as provided by subsection C, a person may not file suit on a claim against the county or an elected or appointed county official in official's capacity. As an appointed or elected official, unless the person has presented the claim to the commissioner's court. And the commissioner's court neglects or refuses to pay all or part of the claim before the sixty, sixtieth day after the date of the presentation of the claim. So had an incident, it was like an accident that happened and there's two sides to the story. One is saying that so much money is owed and no police officers were called to the scene, so we don't have an accident report. And Mr. Rodriguez is claiming that we should pay him eight hundred and seventy dollars and eighty-one cents. So that's where that stands, basically. Not calling into question anybody's integrity on it because that's not where we're at. That's not what we're discussing. We're discussing whether the amount of money or whether the county should pay for the damages to the vehicle. It was a county-owned vehicle that was involved, so. Do we wanna pay this? Eight hundred and seventy dollars and eighty-one cents or no?
Well, issue you then do. There's gonna be litigation if.
Sure.
And I don't necessarily, the man needs the money. I agree, I understand. The way, kind of the way, what I understand the way. I don't know that. The county is responsible, but. The ball of litigation that eight hundred dollars will not be in the store. I would say. Pay him my credit, he won't regret that, but in best interest of everybody. That's just, that's just what I think, because there's gonna be litigation. I would just like to stress there, one, if these events come up, please follow the protocol that Skerritt County has.
Absolutely.
We can, we can work with it.
Absolutely.
My motion is. If you say this Rodriguez.
Is it paying him or pay the invoice?
Pay the invoice.
Thank you. Alright, all in favor? You're abstaining? Alright, very good. Thank you. Thank you, Ellen.
Four, none against, one abstain.
Right. Court to discuss and consider opening the Skerritt County Youth Center. So we've had some changes in the recent past. And I didn't bring what the governor's orders say as far as opening that type of facility. But it says that they can be open, but they, I don't know if y'all remember the. What is it? The orders on daycares. It was basically they could have ten kids in, in each room and they couldn't switch the teachers. No, nobody in that room could move. It's basically the same situation for the youth centers and stuff like that. And Erica, we talked about it a little bit. Can you kinda give us some thoughts on what you've seen and?
Well, what I have read and researched and what I'm observing in the community kind of are oxidants in the spectrum, so I'm on the fence.
Yeah.
I know that a lot of daycares in town are just kinda continuing business as usual, maybe upping their cleaning and whatnot. See the parents playing outside together and running around. The issue that I run into, I know our parents need care for their kids. I know that their kids are being left home alone when they're too young to be home alone and be left in the care of, you know, siblings and whatnot. And I understand the need as a parent myself. I understand the need for healthcare. But I also really feel like we need to keep our kids and our families safe. So as far as, you know, keeping a group of kids in one room all day and not switching them out, even in that room, from what I'm reading. They still have to be six feet apart and they still have to, you know. I'm, I'm struggling, I had a meeting with my staff. We're struggling with how to keep a room full of kids six feet apart and entertained for eight hours a day.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's gonna be a bit of a challenge. You know, we've got the gym, we've got the game room, we've got the classroom. But the logistics of, of our program is that our kids get dropped off at seven thirty a.m. We close at five thirty p.m. And this means one staff, ten kids or whatever the protocol is, in, in one room. And they don't switch to the gym, but these kids here, the kids playing in the gym and, you know, just how to just keep them entertained. You know, summer long or even week long, eight hours a day and, you know, stay away from each other. So that means don't play cars together, don't play Legos together, you know? Don't play baby dolls together. Like we have to map out boxes on the floor, like stay in your box. And the majority of our kids are, you know, six to nine years old, so.
True. Dr. Blaine, I have a question for you. What's T E A saying as far as?
What are they saying?
Yeah.
Nothing. I mean, basically they're, we're just getting the same thing that's coming off the governor's order. So they said, they said we could have a person face-to-face summer school.
Yeah.
They're like, hey, and then we got the same guidelines, one person, no more than eleven in a group. They gotta stay social distance.
Right.
So we're currently, there's no way, then we can't do it. We can't keep them apart. I mean, whatever grade level, I can only imagine little ones, that would drive me crazy. But all the way up to the junior high, I mean, you shouldn't keep them apart either. We're, we're going straight virtual through June. We have a face-to-face plan for July based on academic needs. And we're trying to put the plan together now so that we can do it, social distancing. And we're hoping that maybe restrictions have loosened a little bit by then.
Sure, thank you, thank you. As far as feasibility, it doesn't seem feasible to be able to do, to open up the Boys and Girls, or the Youth Center. It's not the Boys and Girls, but the Youth Center to the public right now. Yeah, that's just my thought. What are your thoughts?
You know, I hate all this shutdown stuff without saying. How many, Erica, how many y'all have any given day before all this?
Our average daily attendance fluctuates between, anywhere between ninety and a hundred and twenty kids for summer program.
No way.
So there's no way we can have that many. And that was my next issue. If we did open, how do we go about choosing which kids get to come? Because out of a hundred and twenty kids, I have to essentially choose thirty.
Yeah.
Ten, twenty, thirty. So that's for my three areas.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't do it yet.
Yeah.
Like what Ann said, just let's see if the restrictions don't get, maybe not lifted, but loosened for that. Because, I mean, how do you pick thirty kids on one?
You don't. You don't.
I would say not yet.
I'd say the same thing. I'm not concerned about the kids. We know the kids aren't being affected like the adults are. But you get kids going home to parents that are immune compromised, then you've got a real problem. So I, I think that we wouldn't do it.
Okay.
So your motion, I second it.
Alright, all in favor? Alright, let's discuss opening the county ball field. So the governor's order says, the latest one said that ball fields could open for practice on May thirty first. Or that, not ball fields, but that youth sports could practice starting May thirty first and start having games on fifteenth. So that's suggesting that we allow them to practice. They don't practice on the field anyway.
Cancel, it's not a little league this season.
Little league, they cancel. So they're all canceled?
So everything's canceled.
Okay, so that's a good point, I think.
It's already been made.
Alright. Alright, consider the line item transfers and budget amendment?
There's one line on transfer and one budget amendment.
Okay.
The line on transfers for the county clerk's office, a capital outlay for sixty-nine hundred out of maintenance agreement, cover costs of new voting machines. And then the budget amendment is the HAVA fund for six thousand six hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Additional balance of the new voting machines, so for HAVA money. And that can only be used for the.
All in favor? Alright, uh, accounts?
Payables, one million, thirty-one thousand, nine twenty-five, seventy.
All in favor? I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'm just gonna put you off.
Thank you. Thank you. I think you see, there was one line on that back page. I wasn't sure what it.
We're put, choosing our.
We're put, choosing our current plan, so I'll put it in there.
Okay. Alright, if I missed.
And then one of those is for you.
Okay, so what are we gonna put? Those designated papers?
This right here, the plan, eight hundred S N G.
Okay, I'll let you fill it in if you don't mind.
Okay, okay, thanks, Erin. Okay, alright, thank you. Hey, Amelia, we're uh, gonna meet again on Friday to discuss.
Okay.
We'll do, we'll do a second class to.
This coming Friday? Yeah.
Thank you, ma'am.
Let's see, now here, okay, so this is the one, that's just the fact, the original, it's the original one.
Yes, I sent those um, to an email to see the difference between what the employee would pay versus if they.
That's the one I made that just made.
Yes, the one with the higher amount, the one twenty.
I'll stick the pinky tab on it, perfect.
Okay, that's true.
Well, hopefully, when I get, get my grants, I can reimburse these back. Get the grant, see if I can put it back.
It looks like it's gonna take off.
Are you in my way, Jim?
You're in my way?
You're in my way, Jim, I think you're in my. The council table.
So, I think, oh, no, she picked all of that deal out of this line. And so now, when we did that, ran this analysis this morning, this line is this much over, it's exactly that much. So, what I was gonna do.
Yes, sir.
If you don't have a problem with it, because it's gonna be basically the same as the normal entry for this amount to this line.
Okay, yeah.
And it still covers it up and you don't have to worry about it.
Okay, we, yeah, but just cover it there, I guess. Okay, cool, yeah, that's fine.
Noticed it when I ran the reports this morning.
Oh, oh, up here, these two?
Whatever works for y'all.
And then, um, Dr. Blaine was one of the LDC board, or that board member, who is the other one?
Elevate elements.
Okay.
This needs to go back to, nope, that's not it.
And one more thing is.
This one. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
The, the other thing was just a quick question, uh. As far as the invoice from Ramon Rodriguez, um, did y'all, have, have y'all checked with an attorney about that or anything?
The county attorney, yeah.
And so you, you are acting on the county attorney's advice or that kind of deal?
We're acting on this, the process as far as that goes, which is. County administration presentation of claims. He reported a claim against us for uh, damages, so he can have that.
Okay, great, and do y'all have a package that I can get, is it down in the office or?
Alright, I'll run down there.
Okay.